Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Kevin Riggs. I'm the chairman of Goffstown Zoning Board of Adjustment. Welcome to the May 2012 meeting. The Goffstown Zoning Board is an elected board of five members and up to five appointed alternates. Currently, the board has five elected members and three, right? We've got three alternates. If anyone is interested in serving on the ZBA, please see Brian Rose for more information. The board has a posted agenda for each meeting and tends to follow the items in order. The board will open the public hearing on an application to receive testimony from applicants, abutters, and affected parties and ask questions about the appeal. The public hearing will then be closed and the board will enter into a deliberative session to discuss the merits of the appeal. For each application, the board will decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or continue to a later meeting. You're welcome to watch the deliberations this evening, or you can contact Brian Rose at Town Hall to get the results. For an applicant's request to be approved, there must be an affirmative vote of at least three members. An applicant can request a continuance if there is not a full five-member board to act on an application. If you are aggrieved by a decision made by the ZBA tonight, you have the right to appeal to the Superior Court. However, before appealing to the Superior Court, you must request a rehearing with this board to preserve your right to appeal. Rehearing requests must be filed within thirty days of the decision and state all reasons why the decision was illegal or unreasonable. Failure to request a rehearing may forfeit your ability to appeal to Superior Court. And with that, I'd like the board to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Kathy Houghton.
Gail Buck.
Joe Feminou, alternate.
Vivian Blondo, alternate.
And I'm Brian Rose, planning and zoning administrator.
All right, good evening, all. All right, so we have an agenda that we've published. One thing that wasn't on the agenda that is probably not going to interest most people here in the public is that we did talk about last month that we would talk about our rules of procedure at the end if we had any comments because we were thinking about if there's any updates necessary to the rules of procedure.
And actually, I was talking about that prior, but I failed to put that into your packets again this month, so if you want to wait another month.
Okay.
That probably would be best since we don't have them in front of us to talk about.
Okay. All right, well, we'll make sure people do it next time. All right, so then the first thing on the agenda this evening is the approval of the minutes from the April 3, 2012 meeting.
I have a correction.
Okay.
On page two, the second to last paragraph, that's the eleventh paragraph down, it's just more of a clarification, actually. The minutes say Brian Rose said they wouldn't make anyone go back and get a new permit because it's in the middle of that time period. Well, I got the tape because I was a bit concerned about that statement and for the record, for clarity, because this is an issue that is going to be brought up again, I believe, at the planning board level, is that I would like it to be corrected and I've written it down for Gail and to discuss with all of you, that it said, that Brian said that he spoke with our town engineer, who is "they," and she said regarding the site specs, that when the state gives a permit out, that they don't make people go back for a new permit until they've let their permit expire because it is in the middle of the time period. And that's...
Can you repeat that?
I can give you a copy of what I've said.
Okay.
So, one thing on just a rule of procedure question, in that application, that was the...
Woodland Trust.
Woodland Trust, which you were not sitting on.
Correct.
You were a member of the public on that one.
Correct.
So, I'm not sure that we can take your adjustment to the record.
Then I would ask another member on the board if there is one that is acting right now, if they would like to present it as a correction. And I'm not sure whether you can or you can't, but it is for clarity purposes. It's not a correction, it's for clarification.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
I just want to add that the minutes are generally not verbatim, just so that you guys all know that. They're not intended to be verbatim, they're generally a good summary, but they're not intended to be verbatim, and they're not.
But it doesn't hurt anything to...
Oh, no, no, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that, that's all.
I can second the motion.
Okay. All right, any discussion?
Could you get that? Do you want a copy too?
Yes.
And I have to agree with what Gail just said, there are other, you know, areas here that when you look at the tapes and you see it, if it was verbatim, we would be into fifty pages of dictation that probably Gail would have to transcribe for everybody. I thought this was a particular issue that should be brought a little bit more, should be cleaned up a little bit and clarified a little bit more. And I'm glad that my associate member, Vivian, agrees with me.
I just feel if there's a question on any of the minutes. And as I heard that you listened to the tape or you heard the videotape. In order to make it the way it should be.
So, yeah, all right. So, I just want to point out, just, I'm not going to make a big deal out of it, but in this specific application, Kathy was not a sitting member of the board. So, I think it would be, you know, normally, we receive public input on minutes to make adjustments.
And I do think that in the past, when I've gone into different, like the planning board, and there has been some issues that have been brought up, that we were, it was discussed and it was allowed, that because it wasn't per se a correction, but a clarification, that it was always accepted.
Sure, it doesn't change that what was stated.
It's accepted, right.
I understand. So, all right, so we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes as corrected, as clarified, excuse me, and by Vivian, a second by Joe. Any further discussion? And I'm going to ask Vivian and Joe to be both voting members on voting for the minutes of the five. Joanna just joined us, so I'm not going to have you vote on the minutes from last meeting, if that's okay.
No.
All those in favor of approving the minutes from the April meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? All right. All right, thank you. All right, so now we're going to go to the first public hearing, and that is, Trepege Condominium Association, applicant is seeking a variance to install uplighting on an existing sign to make the business sign at the entrance of Tatro Drive more visible. The variance is required because Section 8.3 of the zoning ordinance requires that new outside lighting shall project no more than 3% of its rays above the horizon, whereas these lights would project all of their rays above the horizon. The lot is owned by Stephen and Denise Langley and is located at Mast Road, Tatro Drive, which is map five lot 56-1 in the commercial industrial flex zone. Before we do the public hearing, we need to make a determination if this application has regional impact. Brian has recommended that it does not. Any motions or discussion?
So, move.
I'll second.
And I'm going to, I will designate Vivian the voting alternate on this application.
Okay.
And so that would be Joanne, Kathy, myself, Gail, and Vivian. And Vivian has made a motion that there's no regional impact, Gail? That's why I brought that up, right?
I'm sorry.
Yes. And you seconded it?
Yeah.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor that say it has no regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So, who do we have here for that application? Come on up, have a seat, make sure, state your name, et cetera, and you're on camera.
My name is Bill Greiner, and I am the president of the Trepege Condominium Association. I've also got one of the other association members with me, Dr. Greg Tracy. I talked to Brian initially, probably three months ago or so, when this first came up. We were, as you know, the complex is fairly new, and there'd been an issue with lighting. We had tried a couple of different options, downlighting, which originally was permitted, and it, for whatever reasons, what's out there doesn't seem to be adequate in terms of lighting the sign. So, I had spoken with Brian about the possibility of uplighting, and, you know, we, you know, looked at the property next door, which is the Shell Gas Station, and obviously, they must have gone through the same process at one point or another, and we're looking to do something similar, although it would not be, we would not have as much, they have a bigger sign than we do, they've got a taller sign. I don't think that what we're proposing is to the scale or would emit as much light as what's next door. So, that's, in that context, that's why we've moved forward.
And so it's a variance, all right? Anyone have any questions?
I have a few questions. I just drove by there, and there were some, there was a little black light fixture on the top, but it didn't seem to be lit.
That's, I think that's the second generation of what we've put out there. The one that we have now is, that's out there is, I think it's, this is a solar-powered one, it also comes on as it detects, as it gets darker, it would...
The one that's there now.
Yeah, it would come on. This is the second attempt to try to do it, and it's after that we tried two different versions. One was a traditional one, one we went solar, that was a little bit bigger, thought maybe that would do the trick, and it really hasn't done the trick.
The sign seems to be in a, not the greatest location. I was heading north on Mast Road, so it was pretty much totally blocked by the Shell sign until you...
Get right on it.
...asked this Shell sign, which, you know, I was going like this, so I was actually looking for it, but if you weren't looking for it, you probably would just pass right on by. Was there a reason you had to put it in that location?
To be frank, I'm not sure. The Langleys developed, they had the property, they'd come in, I think, here or through the planning board with a concept, and then had gotten an approval for a medical office building. That fell through, so we came to them. I own the unit up above where Catholic Medical Center is now, so I was the first owner there. And so I think the plans had already been approved. I don't know that they came in really for anything other than just a couple of minor things that they dealt with staff, so I think a lot of that was approved early, and in fact, when Brian and I were going through plans and documents, there seemed to be a lot of iterations as to things changing and evolving as the lot was subdivided for the cell tower for our thing, for the potential bed site. So, I'm not exactly sure.
The lights that are down on the bottom of the Shell sign shining up, is that what you're looking to do?
Something like that, but we wouldn't need as much, it would not emit as much lighting as that. As I said, it's a taller sign, bigger sign overall. I mean, I think that's great, I think they've overdone it. We want to illuminate the sign, but we don't need overkill. I'm not suggesting what they have is wrong or bad, I think we would just be less of an impact from a light perspective than they are.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
I'm going to concur with Joanne because I've been by there twice at night, well, more than twice, but just to see for the sign. You also have trees on the Shell part that are blooming right now, so that even hides your sign. I don't care, and I'm not saying I'm against your lighting, I don't care how much lighting you have, until you have that Shell sign moved over...
I know.
Or your sign moved over.
Knock it down.
You will not see it going north unless you know where you're looking for it. So, wherever the placement of the sign is, it's not in a good place for anybody to see your sign, maybe in the daytime, but if you notice, the trees are blooming right now, so it's starting to cover it even more.
And to your point, I could certainly talk to the Langleys, I mean, it's on their property, and ask them if this is approved, if there's a, we're going to have to obviously do the install for the conduit and that, if part of that, if they would consider the comments here and consider moving the sign. They've been pretty accommodating thus far.
Shame to have, you know, a sign that nobody can see, really.
I have a question.
I know the sign's placed as close as it can be to Mast Road, and I think it's only ten feet from the right way, which is the closest it can be. So, moving it closer to Mast Road wouldn't be possible, maybe along the...
Further.
The property, maybe, but it may be just an issue of clearing trees or something like that to make more visibility. It comes down to what's the sign for, right? Is it for residents to know where the place is? Are you advertising for people to drive in by? I live in a condo, and the sign for our condo is two blocks into the side street, right in front of the condo area, so we're definitely not trying to advertise to the public for the condos there, so...
I think that the intent of this sign is certainly to advertise. You know, once you are patient there, whether it's for CMC's practice, Dr. Tracy's practice, or the other ones, you'll know that you're going to Tetro Medical Park, I mean, the park has kind of been designated that, but I think it's certainly some advertising that's one of the big draw, I could speak, I think for Dr. Tracy as well as the other tenants, the big draw was having the visibility, even the building is set back, but having the visibility and the signage there was a big reason that we went forward, each of us individually to be there, and it was conscious effort. There was a lot of traffic there, and to have the exposure of signage there was important, particularly with the building setback, the way that it is. Any building signage would be...
It's too bad you couldn't have a sign that goes like this. No, actually Market Basket in Hook's, it has one. It's much bigger, but if you could have it...
On an angle to both sides.
So, instead of it, like here's the road, instead of it facing this way, you kick it out.
Kind of like a V shape?
Yeah, and then you kick it out the other way. I have some questions.
Sure.
One of the things that I read was that the sign, when the sign permit was issued, was that it wasn't supposed to be in the right of way of the rails to trails. Now, I guess where Mr. Langley isn't here, when I went to look at it, I believe the rails to trails was where the old railroad station tracks were, and this looks like railroad station tracks go like this, and then they curve around the sign. So, do you know whether they came up with some resolution with the Rails to Trails Committee to put the sign right where the Rails to Trails train, because the train certainly wasn't going to go around the sign?
I don't, and when we went through this stuff, I didn't see any notes in the files, and there were a couple of different files that we went through. I didn't see any notation.
I'm not sure.
Okay, well, that was one that I did see. Another thing that was, what I did a little study on today about it, was hours of operation. And I called the gas station, of course, they're open 24 hours a day, so that's all lit, 24 hours a day, from what I understand, talking to them. And then I called the primary care facility, and they told me that their hours of operation are until 4:30, 5 o'clock. So, if the issue of the sign is for people to see it, is there, that deal with perhaps Dr. Tracy's office and the primary care facility, are you saying that the hours of operation there are going to be after 5 o'clock?
There are a couple of things. The lab, which is, it's part of CMC, but it's one tenant, but it's really two sub-tenants. There, the lab opens a lot earlier than their primary care practice, and it closes earlier. Their primary care practice, I think, as you say, closes at 4:30. They've just hired a new physician that's going to go in there, I think they're going to extend their hours. I don't know that they're going to offer evening hours yet, they've started doing that in some of their practices. I own most of the CMC outpatient facilities in and around Manchester Bedford, Goffstown, and so, you know, some of them, they've gone to evening hours, a couple of days a week, one night a week. With their, essentially, this will fill out that practice. At some point, it would not surprise me to see some Tuesday nights till seven. The lab is open early in the morning, so certain times of the year, you know, it's not really light, it's even at seven, but certainly at six in the morning, it's dark. And I believe Dr. Mansour is an orthodontist, he sees, is an orthodontist, mostly kids, so he has, I believe, you know, hours in the evening and that. Again, not every single night, it's not, it'd be misleading if I said every night it's going to be open till 7:30, it's not. I couldn't, I can't speak for Dr. Tracy or Dr. Bailey as far as what their hours are, but I know that Dr. Mansour does have some evening hours.
What I find a little bit, what I'm wrestling with with this, is that number one, the condos aren't there yet, so you don't have the residents going in and out of the condos right now, which would possibly be an issue of consideration. The second thing that I wrestle with is the fact that this is a huge complex, like an oasis in the middle of darkness, because when you come down 114 and you say to people that we are on the left-hand side and there's a Shell station there, you aren't in the middle of a huge commercial area where you would really need to distinguish perhaps your sign from it, because it's all on that block. And I'm wrestling whether or not this variance is a little too soon. I don't know whether this is something that I need to vote to vary our ordinances on when we have 24-hour lighting by Shell station, and we have, it says it wants to go over the horizon, and that was the issue with the variance. And I'm wrestling as to why somebody couldn't see that that's where it is. And because we don't have anything right now that is there at night, you don't have any doctors that are at night there, and you don't have any condo there, and you don't have primary care open after 4:35, my question is, why?
Well, I do...
And that's what I'm wrestling with.
I do, well, there are, the lab is open at 6:00 a.m.
Right.
And so that is dark in the morning.
But Shell is open 24.
Okay, and Dr. Mansour does see patients in the evening, he's the orthodontist. Kids who, again, it's not five days a week that he's there, it's either one or two nights a week, no different than when he was down the street in the former, his former location.
And have, do you know of any complaints of people saying that they've gone by it and they've missed it because they haven't been able to see the sign?
I know there had been complaints that were made, certainly to the CMC folks, because that's, when they have an issue, they come to me. I believe that some patients from some of their practices, I don't want to say that it was Dr. Tracy's or Dr. Mansour's or Dr. Bailey's, raised the issue, and that's why, you know, we had this meeting back in December as an association, and they'd only been in their units three months, and it had been an issue. Now, again, maybe that was because it was the dead of the winter and it was darker longer, but, you know, when we had our annual meeting at the end of December, this was an issue that was raised by all of the, you know, my tenant, Catholic Medical Center, but I believe at least one or two of the physicians.
Do you know when the Tetro signs were out? There are six signs that are out there right now. There are two that say Tetro Park, there's your sign, there's the veterinarian sign, and then there's the Norwood Realty sign. So, we have, like, Sinomania going on in front of this piece of property with all these signs out there. And you're saying to me that people don't know that that's where they should go?
No, the issue was at night, not having any, when it was darker out. So, again, this is, when this came up, it was the end of December, again, when it's, you've got really short days, there was an issue in terms of finding the sign, finding the location, that was an issue that was raised. And we did have lights on there, we swapped them out to the black ones that you see there now, and it really hasn't made any more of an impact.
And what's the voltage you want to go to now?
I don't know if I have it in here.
I think I read 150, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I'd like to know exactly what it is.
Watts, that'd be the watts, probably.
The watt, the watts. For the watt.
So, when we get down to why they're here, and you start looking at how they're asking for a variance, and one of the first items is contrary to public interest, spirit of the ordinance. What in our ordinance are we trying to protect? What is the zoning ordinance trying to protect? Is it trying to protect light pollution onto who? Onto just the community?
In this sense, it's light pollution into the sky, the general public, everyone. When you shine a light up into the sky, it affects the night sky and the ability to view the stars and whatever else is up there. It also could be, you know, causing glare into people's eyes or any other type of negative impact, and so generally, uplighting is discouraged in many zoning ordinances. And a lot of zoning ordinance actually have requirements that all lights, all new lighting be full cutoff, which basically means there's no light projecting in any angle higher than the horizon. So, in this case, if it's an uplighting, then all of the light rays are shining above the horizon because it's angled in that direction.
Yeah. So, it's interesting, you mentioned the Shell station, the Shell station lights are uplit.
Mm-hmm.
Are uplit. So, I mean, is it new? You have a question, Vivian?
Yes, I have a question. The lights that you're going to install that lights up, are they going to be on the ground or on the sign?
I think they were spec for the ground, if you had a preference.
No, no, I just thought, and also, and I know what you're talking about, you know, it's going to disturb the skies, but if it's 150 watts...
But we haven't gotten to what it is yet.
Oh, whatever it is, I think it goes from 50 to 150 anyway, whatever. It only lights so far, I mean, it does light, but the circumference is not that great, where it should, we have on our homes 150 watt lights. I'm just trying to picture that, how much of the sky will that take? How many lights you plan on putting, one, two?
One, yeah. And it'll be less of an impact than what's next door showing.
It'd be one light lining, just...
It could be one in the center. And again, we would...
And it's going to cover, I don't know.
It's not a big area that we have to cover.
Right.
So, it's not even going to be an angled light? It would be a straight up?
We could do a single, yeah, we could do, we could look at either option, I mean, you're taking your wattage, and again, the goal is to cover it, it's not to overdo it. We don't need, as I say, next door is fine, I don't know that we would need that much lighting.
On the ground, we'll go right to the sign anyway, but if it was on the sign, it would be going up. It would not, it wouldn't even help the sign out. So, if you're, I don't know, I'm not an electrician, but...
Back for a variance for a new sign.
Joe, you have a question?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a stupid question, but why couldn't you put the, I've seen signs with illumination coming from the top, and you fasten a little arm, it kind of angles out and points down under the sign, so it has nothing going up.
See, I don't, what happens is if you don't get far enough away from it, and so you don't get, you'd have, you'd end up with a pretty big...
Arm.
Arm, and then in the actual fixture itself, you'd end up covering a portion of that sign, so you'd be blocking it. You could do it, but it would end up defeating the purpose of the sign.
Well, I have seen them high above the sign and out, and just kind of angled down. I mean, it works on signs, I have seen it, so, I don't know, I just, if you can't have uplighting, that was an option, the little arm that points down at it.
So, we could get into the, you know, it's one bulb...
That's right.
You know, but at some point, you know, is it, when does, what does the zoning ordinance have in mind? What was too much? When is too many? You start, you know, the next person builds a property and has a sign, and the next one... Eventually, everybody does, and the zoning ordinance didn't make any difference, because we let them all through, so I don't know.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
When this, was this sign approved as part of the site plan or later on?
It was approved as part of the site plan. In fact, on the site plan, page one that I gave you...
Yeah.
There's a very small detail on that page that shows what the sign looks like.
Yeah.
And it was unlegible on your page, and I apologize for giving you an unlegible piece of paper, but...
I have extra copies of the legible.
It's essentially just a couple of elevations of the two sides of the sign, and today I went in and photocopied a much larger version of it, and I've got one copy of it here.
This...
But it has a detail on here that shows exterior lighting on the ground.
On the ground.
Which, to me, I mean...
So, my next question is, was this allowed at that time? Has this ordinance changed?
Well, I don't know, it hasn't changed in that amount of time, it was only in 2010 when this was approved.
So, why is he here, then? If this is shown on the site plan?
That, that's a good question. At the time, when I had looked at it, I didn't even notice that this detail was here, and I had been focusing up on the top part for the location of the sign, but I hadn't paid attention on the bottom there, that that was a detail that was key, important factor.
I don't know anything about lighting. Is 27 watt compared to...
Is this the sign permit?
The 100, no, it's much smaller, right?
27 watts is much less bright than 150.
It's a compact fluorescent, so...
Well, actually, it's... Well, actually, it de- it depends on the type of bulb, of lamp that you're using. I mean, 27 watts on a, on a fluorescent may be, um, very much stronger than, than, um, 20s, you know, 27 watts on a regular light bulb.
Mm-huh.
Oh, yeah.
So.
I think it has to be because a 27 wa- a 27 watt light bulb isn't something less than you use in a lamp in your home.
Yeah, I mean, I know I use like 60 or- Your typical lamp in your home is like 60 or 70 watts.
Yeah, right.
And a fluorescent of the same volume would be like 13 watts.
Oh, okay.
So.
So, I don't know, it looks to me like you're-
So we could make a motion that just says, this is moot.
I know, and I saw this, yeah.
Well, and I, I thought it would be important for the zoning board to, um, possibly still look at this and determine whether or not to act on it. I do know that back when this was approved, um, at least from what I can see in the, in the approvals, this regulation was still in place. And so if that detail was maybe somehow missed by the planning board when they approved it, I think it would be behoove the zoning board at least to formalize that, yeah, they're okay. And that, they should be granted a variance prior to getting a planning board approval for a sign like this.
Well, well, when I looked at everything, and I looked over the minutes from 2009, 2010, and went back to them, and have spoken to Brian today, and that's why I have the information in front of us regarding the signs and the sign permits. And i- it does state that it is based upon, the sign permit, and it was in some of the minutes, is based upon, um, that, which was shown on this particular, um-
Yeah, the sign per-
drawing of March 23rd, 2010, when it was approved. So this was appro- and, and it was specific to be approved with the 27 watts. Um, that, that was part of the approval.
This, the sign permit language states that it's a freestanding, uh, it's a freestanding sign to be erected on the corner of Mast Road and Tetro Drive in accordance with the approved site plan, which is what you have in front of you. Um, signed 32310. Freestanding sign will be 32 square feet in size, eight feet tall, and, and here's the last part, illuminated by shielded external white light. So as long as the lighting is a shielded external white light, um, you know, this, I think, you know, they were granted a permit already for that.
But we could say that we still should have had ZBA approval before that permit was granted.
Yeah.
Because the ordinance was stated. It was, it was in place.
Right. Okay. Anyone else have any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone here to, else that wants to speak on this application?
Yes, please. Just a couple of, I'm, correct, Tracy? Thank you for your time. In, to answer several questions, um, particularly in the winter when it gets dark at 3:30, my patients, as well as some of the others, have trouble seeing it. And particularly in the morning with the lab open up top. And Dr. Bailey tends to go to seven, eight o'clock a couple of days a week. It's not every day, and it's, um, what we're looking for is something where our not exist, I'm sorry, existing patients, um, as well as new patients, see the sign and know that there's something up there with the build of the condos so far off the Mast Road. And I just, I'm sorry, but that's, I'm not involved, pardon me, with the intricacies of it. But, excuse me, um, it just seems that we'd like it a little bit more lit. The uplighting, um, sorry, the downlighting on the solar panel is just not working.
And do you, do you think it is the lighting of the sign or the sign itself that is, i- is not showing to the public? When I, when I go by there, I, I, to be honest with you, I was surprised to see your name on the sign.
Mm-huh.
Because when you're driving by, you, you don't see the ni- in the middle of the day, today. And other days, you don't see the sign. So my question is, even if you illuminate it a little bit more, is that going to resolve your problem?
Well, I think it will. I'm not an expert at all.
Yeah.
But I think it helps our patients know where they're going, especially first time through. Obviously, if they've been there once or twice, they've got it down pat. The other thing is, um, as far as the Shell Station goes, it kind of overpowers us, you know? And also on the GPS systems, a lot of them, the newer ones even, don't have Tetro Drive on them. So you get somebody trying to get to the, uh, office, it just doesn't have the ability to, because Tetro Drive is not in many of the GPS systems in the cars. So it's just a business help, I believe.
Any questions for the doctor? Thank you.
Thank you much.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this application? Twenty male last issues or questions before we close the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Vivian, yes, you're still the voting alternate on this one? Any motions or discussion?
I'll discuss and I'll make a motion. Mr. Chair, I think that if you look at the wattage, and 150, I, I feel that if it's on the ground and it's focused on the sign, 150 watts is not a big, big illumination as far as spotlights, uh, commercial spotlights concerned. You have homes and you have businesses now that have them up by their roof and they illuminate their, their, um, their rate of circumference of illumination is really, really a large area. But if you have a, a light, I feel that's, that's focused on the sign, your circumference is not that great because it's too close to the sign to make a hindrance. And it's focused mostly on what's awarded in the sign. And in all fairness to these people, I feel that no matter what they put for the, for a light, they're still going to be blinded by the show light and everything, but it's worth a try. And in saying that, I make a motion to approve their request.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just wanted to say that on the permit, like, this is where it says, it says here, and this has to do with, if it is discovered that the sign is improperly located, it will be the developer's responsibility to correct the location of the sign. Um, I still go back to the question as to whether or not that this is in part of the Rails to Trails program. And because of its location, it seems to me that it i- is in the wrong location because it's right, it seems to be right in the middle of where the Rails to Trails trail is. So, um-
Which would be very surprising, because, you know, they take pride in that. I can't imagine that they would just go around the sign, if the sign would be there.
Well, I, um, in discussions with some people that are on the Rails to Trails Committee, I have heard that there are some issues that have to deal with this whole commercial complex and where the, the Rails to Trails, um, actually goes through.
Oh, so there's maybe a dispute of where it actually goes through? Yeah, I do, I do believe that there are two options in that particular location of where the trail is supposed to be. And currently, they're using one, but they're hoping to move it to another spot to-
A backup, right?
Right. So I think I've gone through that path, right where it comes back onto the road there, yes. I know what you're speaking about. It, it may not be an issue long-term, but in the temporary right now, as it's not fully developed, you know, that may be what's causing the issue.
What, not to get away from it, but I mean, what action does the town take if it is in the wrong place?
Well, I mean, I-
It's been, I'm just curious.
I can double check into it to find out, you know, what the, what the scenario is. And, and obviously, the permit talks to, you know, whether it's placed correctly or not, then they'll have to move it. So, I mean, that's something that we'll, we'll work out with them. I don't think that's necessarily part of this act.
No, no.
I would think any, any, anything to do Rails to Trails, any development, I think the Rails to Trails were involved in most of the, any development that's been going on. I know they came to most meetings, I, I didn't see them at these meetings, but they came to most meetings where it did affect the Rails to Trails. And like you said, if it's, if it's just a short-term thing, I'm not sure what agreement was made, I-
It's not a review of this board at this, at this moment.
Okay, that's it.
Any other discussion? All right, motion by Vivian, second by Gail to approve the variance as requested. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, or abstained? Okay. Good. Not you, Joe. Not on that one.
No, no, that's okay.
You're good?
It's okay. I like to listen to you.
No, I'm glad you participate in the conversation. All right, the next, if I find my agenda. All right, I'm going to read it from right here. The second item on the, uh, hearing, ten S Robert and Mary Ann Bartlett, owners are seeking a special exception to demolish and rebuild a single-family home. A special exception is needed because the lot is non-conforming due to lot size. The lot is 1.33 acres in size, whereas Section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance states that the minimum lot size is two acres in the agricultural zone. Section 14.7.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a special exception to develop a non-conforming lot. The property is located at 371 Tibbetts Hill Road, which is map 11, lot 15, in the agricultural zone. There was. Okay.
36 Snow Road?
Oh, yeah.
I'm Robert Bartlett, the owner.
Okay, in just a minute. And I think, agenda.
What, what's incorrect?
The address, the property address, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
The ad- the address information had been incorrect on the original notice. And the property owners came in, um, and showed it to us. And so, actually, we sent a new notice out for the newspaper and to the butters, um, making that correction. Um, and it was done prior to the deadline for, for all the notices.
I think that's the one, I, actually, we received that in our packets, the correct one, I believe. Except I just couldn't find mine, and I read from the folder here, and it obviously-
Yeah, so, I apologize if that wasn't made correct on, on that one in your folder. Okay, so before we move on and open the public hearing, uh, we need to determine regional impact. And I believe for this application, because I think I'm going to have Vivian for the last one, I'm going to have Joe be the voting alternate, if that's all right, on this application? So, any motions or discussion of regional impact?
I make a motion that it, it does not have regional impact.
And I'm going to second that. Any discussion? All those in favor that it does not have regional impact, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay? All right. Sir, your name?
Robert Bartlett.
And you're looking for a special exception?
Yes.
All right? Okay, can you tell us about it?
Uh, what we did is, we took down a small home, it was pretty dilapidated. And we did get a, an approval for a special exception before. Because of circumstances, we didn't move forward with it. The project ended getting later and later, and then the economic, uh, conditions were getting worse and worse. So we decided to put it on hold. But we'd like to, uh, move forward with it. The house is now down, we've already got a septic design in there. Um, it's currently being re-approved now, but it was approved once before.
So you had a special exception before.
Yes.
You had two conditions of that special exception. That the unit had to be demolished, and that you had to, must have been an updated septic plan prior to building permit being issued. And that has been done, you said?
Both have been, yeah.
What are you planning on building now?
Uh, just a single-family home.
And it will meet the setback requirements?
Yes, absolutely.
Is it the si- are we, the information that we are looking at that was in our package, is this similar to information that was submitted prior in 2005?
Yes.
So the home that you're going to put on that would be within the same footprint?
Roughly, that, that's just a, an estimated guideline, but we will definitely be within setbacks.
So the five criteria are that it's consistent with the current master plan. And you state that it is, it's already cited for a family home. The size of frequencies of use will not alter the character of the neighborhood. Use is not changing. Um, that it's not going to create a nuisance or hazard of vehicles or pedestrians. Um, you also say it's sufficient size for appropriate facilities and the proper operation of the use. You're talking about it's meeting all setback requirements. And the location is of sufficient size to allow for appropriate buffers of this use to adjacent properties. Again, you talk about the home, a home on the property meeting setbacks. Single-family home, you're not doing anything crazy out there?
No.
No, just a home?
What do you mean?
I don't know. Things that, a home, that was, that was lighthearted, I guess I shouldn't have said that.
No, no, it's pretty simple.
Okay. Are you building like a theme park or anything like that?
No.
Right, that's what we're trying to get at. Vivian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I went by there, I visited the spot, and I, uh, couldn't find it. But I mean, I found it after, I talked to the neighbor, Kit Hanson. And, um, she said that I wanted to walk the property to see exactly where the location was of the old home that was torn down. And she said that there was no, really no foundation, so it would be hard for me to find out where the house was. Uh, her comment was that, uh, she's happy that it's going to, something's going to be built over there. And she had no objections. So just thought I'd give you that, but-
Yeah, it was actually an old stone foundation, so there wasn't much there.
About the well, do you have a well?
Uh, we'll be drilling a new one.
It's been, I guess it's been abandoned long enough or something, she said that. That was her comment.
Any other questions? All right, Mr. Bartlett, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Anyone else here would like to speak on this application, for or against? Anyone have any questions of the applicant before we close the public hearing? All right, we're close to public hearing, open up for motions or discussion?
I make the motion to approve the special exception with, um, still the condition that he must submit an updated septic plan prior to a building permit being issued. Because he said he's going forward with that, and he hasn't gotten it yet, but he's going back for it. And, um, that the house has to be within the allowable setbacks.
Second? Seems pretty simple. So, so, uh, to officially, so you're going to continue that one condition from the 2005 regarding the-
Conditions, isn't it?
Um, septic plant.
The house is already down, so that was, that's, the condition's mute, I think.
So officially, there will be at least one condition that says an updated septic plan needs to be submitted before a, uh, building permit being issued. And the second one was, is it, it's not really a condition as long as, I mean, if it was within the-
Because it's non-conforming, I thought I'd throw it in there, but-
Yeah, it shouldn't, well, it's- That's actually already a condition of granting these, these, um, special exceptions.
As long as it is, I will redo my, my condition, but with the understanding that, that-
You'd have to come for a variance.
He would have to come for a variance, right? Yeah, okay.
Right, I mean, if you started admitting, getting into setbacks, you'd have to come for a variance.
Okay.
So we have the one condition.
The one condition.
And Joe's still a second?
I'm comfortable with that, yes.
Any other discussion on that? All right, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Joe to approve the special exception with the one condition regarding the septic plan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? All right, good. You're welcome. Hopefully, it works out for you this time.
Yeah.
Hope you have a good coffee.
The next, uh, application tonight for a public hearing is Timothy and Catherine Yars. And you can correct me after. Owners are seeking a variance to build a 12-by-16 shed within the rear and side yard setback areas. The variance is required as the shed will be built two feet from the side lot line and three feet from the rear lot line, whereas Section 5.1, which is accessory buildings, requires a 10-foot setback for accessory buildings from both the side and rear, rear lot lines. The lot is located at 2 Reed Street, which is map 34, lot 139, in the Village Commercial District. And before we, uh, open up the public- And before we open up the public hearing, we need to determine...
I make a motion that this has no regional impact.
Any discussion? All those in favor that this application has no regional impacts, and I'm gonna ask Joe to be voting alternate on this one again, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions or nays? Okay? Sir, please come forward. And state your name.
I'm Timmy Yars, I'm the homeowner at 2 Reed Street. And so basically, all I really wanna do is just build a new shed. There's an existing shed at the location at which I'm hoping to build the new shed. It's just, the existing one is, I think, 10 by 8, and I just wanna build a slightly larger one to accommodate more equipment for my kids and my family and everything, so. The lots in that general area are very small, and so it's pretty much the norm to have, there's quite a few different properties in that area that have the same kind of requirements and the same kind of limitations in space, and also have outbuildings that are pretty much in the same, like, they don't meet the setback requirements and everything, and so, including the shed that I have there right now and everything, so, I mean, the precedent is there, so I'm just hoping to build a larger one.
And what's the facility that's right on the property line next to you there?
Next to me, on Reed Street, there is, there's another home. And then behind my property, there is a, it's a combination rental, like apartment complex slash Goffstown wrecker service. Like, the lot to the back of the property on Elm Street is...
Is that Battistelli's?
Excuse me?
Battistelli's?
Yes, yes.
What's the property on your left-hand side as you look at your place?
Left-hand side is the meeting house.
I don't think I'm familiar with that.
It's the...
That was the old elementary school, the brick building back then?
Yeah, now it's elderly housing.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
What's the dotted line in your back, on your side yards?
Uh, driveway.
Oh, the driveway? What's the other shed?
The other shed is an 8 by...
10.
8 by 8, 8 by 10 shed, that is just in the backyard for lawn equipment and stuff like that.
That's in the opposite corner, right?
That's correct.
I find it a little intricate, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, what was the dimensions of the corn shed?
The proposed one?
The one you're replacing?
Uh, it's 10 by 8.
How come other driveways don't show up?
It has dotted lines?
Yeah.
Was it added?
Depends on if they're paved or dirt sometimes. Is yours a dirt driveway?
It's paved.
Oh, it's paved.
I'm not sure if, it's maybe the maps are outdated, because the shed that is existing that I'm hoping to replace was not actually on the GIS map, I sketched it in there.
That's, my question was, because I'm looking at this portion of our handout.
Yeah.
And it doesn't show the shed here.
Yeah, I sketched it in.
But you sketched it in down here, oh, okay. Did you get an approval for that shed?
Trying to do the right thing now, anyway.
When'd you buy the house?
Uh, 2006.
Okay.
Yes, Gail.
The shed that you have now, you said already encroaches in the setbacks?
Yes, it does.
And the new shed's not gonna go any further into the setbacks than what you have there now, correct?
That's correct, just occupy the same footprint.
So the bigger size is going to go into your lot?
That's correct.
Okay.
So you're reducing your amount of your lot to make it bigger?
Exactly.
Now, the rear lot line, there's this more shed on the rear, close to the rear lot line, but...
Right.
And the side, actually. And it's both, so you said the one behind you is not a residential unit, or it was a rental?
It's rental-residential, I suppose, it's apartments and stuff.
And on the, so looking at your house on the right-hand side, is it residential, it's a house, right?
Yes.
When I drove by it. And it looks like somebody's pointing that that's...
That's her.
Okay? So you're asking for a variance to encroach, continuing encroaching into the side and the rear setback. You're talking about the public interest, spirit of the ordinance, substantial justice. You do not believe that it diminishes surrounding property values, is that correct?
I can't imagine it would.
And then you talk about hardship and the fact that the lots in the neighborhood are very small. Don't know if that's, you start looking at the special conditions of the property, is that maybe you don't have as much built up on your lot as others, is that the hardship?
I suppose, yeah. Some have garages, some don't, and I just don't know.
And you don't have a garage, right?
I do not, no.
All right, anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chair. Yeah, I was there Sunday, was it?
Saturday or Sunday, I don't recall.
Saturday, it was on a Saturday, because I took my husband on a Sunday to see it.
That's a travel.
I was excited that he was outside. I could talk to somebody. And he explained it to me, and I agree, I think he wants to, you want to replace that whole shed, right?
Yes.
Yeah, because it looked like it needed to, some facelift.
Yeah.
Other than that, I, I apologize for not introducing myself
No worries.
the way I should have introduced myself when I looked at your property.
Quite all right.
You're just telling me or me?
I just says, hi, my name's Vivian, I'm a zoning, bye.
I wasn't intimidated, it's quite all right.
I understand why he wants to, he's got a lot of little bicycles there, and he had a few things that didn't fit in the shed anymore.
Good, so I staged it well, then, so when you showed up.
Staging his everything.
You must think that's all afternoon, is drive around?
Someone's gotta do it.
Yeah, the existing shed's just one of those really cheapo metal Home Depot kinda deals, and so, it's not terribly attractive.
I didn't want to say that.
Oh, no, it's okay.
What are you planning on, what kind of shed are you planning, just...
A wooden, garden-type shed, so.
How tall is the shed, Vivian, is there a difference in the height to the old one and the new one?
The new one is a little bit taller, I believe it's 14 feet tall?
And the current one?
The current one is like 7, 7 or 8. I think, yeah.
So it's quite a bit, so...
I think it's taller than that.
Was it?
It looked like it was taller.
When you walk into it?
Yeah.
I have to duck my head to get into it, but yeah, I can stand up in the peak and everything, so.
Yeah, so it's not terribly tall then, so the new one's gonna be quite large. Or, I'll say bigger.
Bigger, yes.
All right? Anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak for or against this application? Ma'am?
My name is Mary Archibald.
Do you wanna come up front? Yes, you do. You make no exceptions.
Come on, Mary, let's go.
Plus the camera can catch you better.
My name is Mary Archibald, and I live at 24 Elm Street, I'm on the corner of Almond Reed. And from the way you've been talking, I guess I'm to the right of him.
Yeah, I guess I look at it the right.
I think the shed probably will be the longest section, probably against my, my area. I have no objection whatsoever. And I'm glad he said it was gonna be as high as it is, because that means I don't have to look at Jay Battistelli's crap in the...
I see.
Sorry, but...
I'm not sure you actually have the longest, according to the drawing, but you still got 12 feet there.
Actually, get the short side.
Am I getting the short side? Well, that means it'll cover it up even more.
Tell us how you really feel, dear.
But I have no, I have no objection whatsoever. That old shed has been there, I can't tell you how many years, but it was put up three owners ago that I can remember. And, so it's been there for quite a while.
Okay. Do you agree?
It's had a good life?
Pardon me?
The shed that he's replacing has had a good life, it's...
It certainly has. In fact, hopefully he'll find a way of keeping Sir Skunk from going under it anymore.
Do you agree, do you agree that the whole neighborhood, that the lots are quite compact?
Oh my, if you've ever been on Reed Street and on Cottage, their postage stamps. I've got probably more land than he has. I'm a corner lot, I don't have much, but I've got a lot more than he has. And I feel sorry for him, I mean, I know he needs it, but he's not gonna have much land left to do anything on.
Right, right, he can store things, though.
This is true, and I may bring something over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you, Mary.
You too, Vivian.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone else here? Anyone else to speak on this application before? Okay?
I'll just make a quick comment, I think the reason why it didn't show up on the GIS maps, you know, obviously it's been there for a long time. There's a big tree there, and I, in looking at the aerials, like Bing maps where you can see it from an angle, I couldn't even see the shed with that, because of the big tree.
Yeah, I looked at it, and I couldn't see these last night. No, on, from the Bing maps, I do a lot of mine from the Bing maps, I do some on-site, this one I drove by tonight.
Yeah, so I think that's probably, it just couldn't get picked up with whoever was looking at the, because they use the aerials to draw on any accessory buildings on the GIS, so.
Accessory buildings taxed?
And our GIS is sometimes sketchy at best.
Yes, I understand, that's why there's that...
Accessory buildings are taxed.
Yes. That's why there's that push by the town to try get an update to the GIS, to the software, correct?
That's right.
Okay, anyone else have any questions before we close the public hearing? And I don't think there's anyone else that had any comments. All right, close the public hearing. And again, Joe's the voting alternate on this. Any motions or discussion on this application?
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Gail, motion to approve, Kathy seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Okay? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I don't know somebody who lived in that house.
Oh, yeah?
A bunch of college women.
No, they don't. And for the last public hearing tonight, not least, and they're back in front of us again after one or two months off, I don't recall the exact date. Jennifer Levy, you'll have to pronounce these when I get them, Levy and Mary LaRoche, owners and applicant, are seeking variances to build an attached garage to an existing single-family home four feet from the front line, whereas section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a 25-foot front yard setback. The applicant is also proposing to build the proposed garage 22 feet from the rear lot line, whereas section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance requires a 30-foot rear yard setback, and whereas section 13.3.3.5 of the zoning ordinance requires a 100-foot wetland surface water conservation district setback from any defined surface water. A variance is also required because the total proposed square footage of all structures on the lot equals 28.04% building coverage, whereas section 4.3 of the zoning ordinance table of dimensional regulations requires a maximum building coverage of 25%. The property is located at 144 Moose Club Park Road, map 21, lot 115, in the residential two zone. Before we hear from the applicant, we need to determine regional impact.
Who's voting alternate?
And the voting alternate on this will be Vivian, Vivian, did you work this application two months ago? That's why I left you.
She remembered.
Vivian will be the voting alternate. Any motions or discussion on regional impact?
I make a motion, it doesn't have any regional impact.
All right, first by Kathy, second by Vivian. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed or abstained? Okay. Ladies? Pull up a chair, or whoever wants to speak.
My name is actually Jennifer Levy.
Levy.
Marie LaRoche.
Thank you.
I'm Marie LaRoche, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So again, four variances, right?
Yes.
It's the same as last time?
Exactly.
Now, who... No, no, no.
The same variances are...
Same variance rules, different details.
Different, yes, package put together. After taking consideration of the concerns with both the Conservation Commission and the public concern for safety, we also invited Brian to come out and take a look at our property to walk through the different scenarios that we thought we might have, or maybe were proposed to us, and he graciously did take us up on that invitation, so. What we came up with, what we think is the best scenario for our situation was to propose the original structure, which was a 24 by 22 garage and a 20 by 12 shed, both attached to the home, and set it four feet back from the road, where we originally proposed to have it on zero feet from the road. This allows for some distance in exiting out of the garage without making the home itself an obstruction to oncoming traffic that would be traveling up Moose Club Park Road. It also allows for us to utilize the land we have across the street for maneuverability into reversing into the garage, which currently we do not have in our existing driveway. We would have, we actually have to angle off into an obstructed view to reverse into our driveway. And one of the scenarios that was proposed by this board was to create some type of side entry, which would not allow us to utilize our land either, and it would actually probably create more impervious surface and not gain any safety benefit, really, to the situation. One of the other things we considered was the impervious surface currently in existence on our property, and we have included the excavation of the existing driveway in this particular project. So, I think those would be the major changes in our package.
Yes, and so I saw there was a discussion in your package that talked about the differences between what the zoning ordinance looks at as buildable property, the percentages, and that's what you, the applicant speaks, application speaks to, that it's at 28.04% versus 25%, which is different than what maybe the state or Conservation Commission looks at as far as impervious surfaces.
And I did make a little chart, I know I handed it out at the Conservation Commission, and it's basically just a comparison of currently and proposed differences between the Goffstown ordinance and the and the Shoreland Protection Act impervious surface.
We'll share.
Well, I have more.
Okay.
Do you have a couple more?
Oh, I do, okay. One of the, one of the things I think also is important in our situation, I mean, you have a very unique situation. By the water. We have a Classics Road that separates our primary lot, which our house is located on, and we do have an additional lot across the street. I believe the map that's in the package, I mentioned this last time, it shows it as three separate maps, it's map 18, lot 56, map 18, lot 57, and map 21, lot 117, which currently is referred to as map 21, lot 117. It encompasses those three lots. We are unable to account for that in our total square footage, although we own it, because it is separated by a Classics Road.
Moose Club Park.
Yes, that one. And just, the square footage of the lot that we can't consider is 11,776.05 square feet. If you added that to our existing lot, which is 8,723, that gives us a total of 20,499.05 square feet of actual property we own. So when figuring out the impervious surface is, it's unfortunate for us that it can't be included, although it's there and it's not developed at all, so, you know, it's just, it's land that is pervious and...
Okay, do you have questions?
I do, did you ever think of consolidating all three lots, so you get that...
We do have those three across the street consolidated.
I'm talking about 21, 18, 57, 56, and your main lot. Did you ever think of...
I don't believe we can, because it's separated by the road, yeah. I think, I thought we looked, we did look into that, and at the time, we would have consolidated all four.
I believe that's correct.
At that point, I was looking for the convenience of one tax map, but...
Do you own that road?
Uh, no.
Okay.
At least, from my understanding, the Classics Road doesn't start until just... At least from my understanding, the classics road doesn't start until just past their lot. Because it shows on the, on the GIS that there is the road with the right-of-way up to that point, and then after their lot, it shows that the lots, um, they come in right to the road line, and then, you know, that's.
Well, what's it up to that point, a class five?
Yes.
Well, we were told it's classics, we, because we were looking for, for assistance in maintaining that road from the town and keep, keeping up with the integrity of it and if we were told.
Because the town will take care of a class five?
Well, they were told it was a classics. We, they have wanted nothing to do with it, so.
So basically, the town, it is a town road, however, we, they don't maintain it at all.
They hear that.
Yeah. The town, what we saw on the, the maps is that.
They don't maintain classics roads.
Right, and that's what we were told, it is a classics road and.
And also that you would, if it was class six though, you would be required to go to selectmen for any building permits, which have you been ever required to go there before? Because I know you've built other small projects on your lot.
Right, no, it was never, it was never brought up. However, the town line, the Gothstown town line is at the end of our property. So all of our properties are actually included on the map on a Gothstown road, however, the answer we were given by the, the.
Carl Quarrum.
Town of.
The director of public.
Yes, that's who it is.
Yes, that's debatable.
Yeah, yes.
What are you saying, your property finishes in Gothstown?
No, no, uh, the, the, the road is, the Gothstown line on the road
Yeah.
is on the end of our property. So all of our property is included on what is Gothstown road, and then it turns into a private classics road.
Oh, I see, private.
Yeah, and.
That's what I thought, I thought there was a, when I went there.
So the part where it's owned by, not owned, but the class five part, or that should be maintained by the town.
I would have thought, but I was told.
Can you tell me which side of the property you're saying the class five road, your understanding?
If you, uh, if you look at the, um, the map, that, the surveyed map.
I have this.
Yes, okay, if you follow Moose Club and you angle around the bend and you pass our map twenty-one lot one fifteen, and then you pass our proposed
Yeah.
garage shed structure, and you continue on to the line that says.
Before the sewer easement?
The end of your property?
Yeah, no, it's, it's right there.
Roughly.
It's, it's roughly around south twenty-two, uh, zero eight.
Yeah, that's your side property line.
I believe that, yeah, I think that's it roughly.
So you're saying, okay, so is there, so do we know what, do we know what kind of class road we're working within?
Well, it's, it's my understanding that that, that that's class five up until that point, and then after that is when it becomes class six.
So how come the town's not maintaining it?
That's a question for Mr. Quarrum.
Yeah, not, not us. Does it make a difference in how we determine this application, whether it's a five or a six?
Yeah.
Well, there's already, there's already an existing house there. There's already an existing house there.
Not necessarily on how you determine your application. It would have bearing on whether or not the selectmen would be the approvers of a building permit or the building official.
But I don't think that. But I would pursue that other thing with the selectmen.
Oh, we, we have, we do. We become exhausted with that.
Go to the selectmen? That's where you need to go. Not Carl.
Yeah.
Vivian?
Thank you.
If the house is already there, I don't think, why would they have to go to the board of selectmen? I know that if the house was destroyed or burnt down and they want a class six road, they want it to be built.
I'm not saying that, I'm just telling them for maintaining that, yeah. Maintaining that class five should be maintained by the town.
But they're on a class six, they said.
But no, their property is on a class five.
Statutes require that for building permits for structures on class six roads, you have to go to the selectmen.
And upgrade the.
Doesn't matter if the house is there already, if you're building structure on your lot or if you're getting a permit for that, then you have to go to selectmen for approval.
I never understood it that way.
They're on a class five.
That's why.
Yeah.
I would, uh, to be perfectly honest with you, I'd like to get this issue straightened out about the road before we go any further with the application.
I'd like to know if, if, why can't they do a swap with the town?
I don't know, but I mean.
Take their road across, put it over there and.
Oh, well, our property doesn't just include the road, it goes all the way up the hill.
I don't know that the maintenance of the road is necessarily under question.
So it wouldn't be a fair swap for us.
Right.
No, but I think they should go talk to the selectmen about maintaining that portion of class five road.
With the class five, they should be able to maintain it.
Right. So I, so I think we have a path forward on whether or not we want to approve these variances with the application in front of us. If, but as far as right now, the selectmen aren't, aren't chomping at the bit to work on the building permits on this property. They haven't, have you done previous building on this? And gotten building permits? Did you have to go to the selectmen?
Nope.
I wouldn't say that they would have to go for this either, right?
I, I would say that it's that way.
They're treating.
Unless, unless determined otherwise, but, I mean, that, that's how they've always been treated thus far, and so I'm not, I'm not saying that we should go any different.
It's a class five road. Is that what we're saying?
Right. I, I'm, I'm not pushing to say that the selectmen are going to get involved.
Yeah. No, I know.
That's what it seems like. Did, did it say it on the tax maps?
That's, I mean, the tax maps show, you know, you know how there's a right-of-way that exceeds the typical width of a road on the tax maps? That follows all the way up until the end of this property, and then it, that part disappears and it's just the line for the road.
Um, I, the, actually, it's.
It's a small right-of-way or something or a private road.
Does it say anything on the property?
I have a note, and I'm, I'm actually incorrect on where I told you. It is, you were right.
Down that road. Yeah.
There is a note on, on the map.
The sewer easement, we have a sewer easement down there.
Okay, they're trying to say, where's your note?
The, it's on, uh, it's actually on the town, and that note isn't on the copy.
Where are we looking at?
On the, on the same survey map, however, on the actual full map that.
Okay, what does it say?
There is a note that map twenty-one, sorry. Uh, the portion of Moose Club Park Road west of the easterly boundary of map twenty-one lot one sixteen, that's not yet at the edge of our property, is considered a private road. See records on file at Gothstown Town Hall.
So the, on the what side of that?
The easterly side.
Easterly side, so what does that mean? It means.
The one more, more towards Manchester. That's easterly.
Easterly.
Uh, I did put a little north arrow on the left-hand corner of the.
What is it?
Can you read that one more time?
Yes. Is Manchester east?
The, um.
To the right of that.
The portion of Moose Club Park Road west of the easterly boundary of map twenty-one lot one sixteen is considered a private road. See records on file.
West of the easterly.
Okay, so all of your frontage is what that's saying, right?
Um, no.
Your easterly boundary is this boundary, right?
It's right here, so it's actually kind of meeting where we're existing.
Thirty-four, we, there's like a stone wall, map eighteen lot fifty-seven.
Yeah.
There's the stone, like, there's a stone wall that runs across that, and there's a thirty-four point six oh, you see that? That's the line.
That's the line.
That's where it becomes a private road.
Everything to the left of that.
Yes. But however, our property, if you go across the street, extends further than that.
Yeah.
So maybe a little section of the riverside of our property is on private land.
But the majority is.
Yes, and it seems to pretty much meet where we're, the edge of the proposed structure.
That sounds like the debate that you have of town. It sounds like the tax maps or the town map is, what Brian is working with is correct.
Yes.
So I think the application that you have in front of us is all that's needed, you don't have to go to the selectmen. All right, any other questions for discussion?
Well, I have some, there's questions. When I was down there, and when I look at this particular drawing, it, it, it doesn't show what I, what I saw with my eye, and I think this, I think this picture with the, with the
Yes.
the fence in it is, 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 is quite telling. You do say that your property line is where the fences are.
That's correct.
But there's, there's a lot of property between what appears to be this road and the retaining wall that is, has, and is being utilized as storage for different things that I saw out there today.
I, I don't know if it would help to, I did put together a photo package with kind of a legend, because I know it was quite confusing when I was here last about actually how our property, property lies, and if you want me to.
Uh, no, just which diagram are you talking about?
I'm looking at D. D. The fourth one. And a couple of things are coming across my mind about this. I, I, I think that at the end, right by that thirty-four point six line, where the end, where the, we say where the class five is, that area there by where the retaining wall is, I think could possibly handle a garage across the street.
Yeah, we, we did address this the last time we were here, and, and the, you know more, you speak.
We cannot build into that hill.
I'm not, I'm, I'm not looking.
If we were to put something there, we would have the exact same issues that we have on this side of the road, would being that we would be on, right on the boundary lines, we'd be right similar to the road, and the angle would be difficult depending on different, you know.
Yeah, currently, the, the area we're proposing to have the, the opening to the garage allows us to use that, that area to, that other lot to pull into, to reverse into the garage, which is.
Yeah, it looks like the space underneath the retaining wall is about the same size as the, the proposed garage area.
And I'm saying the garage area, not the, the shed part that's on part of the garage.
So you're proposing to split it up?
I, I, yeah. What I'm trying to do is get it away from the river. I'm trying to get it.
We don't have power over there, I don't quite know how we'd open and close our garage door without getting out, like, stopping in the road, opening a garage door.
Also, that being a separate lot, garage is not really allowed as a, as a standalone use. It's supposed to be a single-family home or something like that versus just a garage, or it's just a shed or something like that. Those are typically supposed to only be accessory to another use.
But there's no way they could put a house on there. So you're, you are then saying that you are not allowing any, anything buildable on a piece of property.
It's a variance.
It would be a variance, right.
It would have to go by.
Because it wouldn't meet setbacks and the usage, so they would have to come back for variance.
Any structure on that would have to.
And plus, you're probably still approximately within the hundred-foot setback from the water line. Approximately.
And then it's questionable to me if the shed could actually go along on the other side of the garage across the street. Because I, I was, um, I got, I, I, I had a misconception as to the amount of property that was across the street, and I had not focused in looking at it when I had gone on my drive by the last time I, the last application. And this time I did it, and the, that was one of my thoughts. And another thought was, could the road go further in, over onto your property? So that the road would, would turn, you'd have a wider bend in the road towards the retaining wall and have it come back over, which gives you more, um, of a back-out space if the garage was to go on the other side. But I think there are a couple of options here.
Changing the road, though, would require lot line adjustments, and, I mean, that would be a very big undertaking for not only this lot, but multiple other lots too.
I, I understand that. I'm just saying that it, it's a, it would address the issue of safety if, if this was so important to them, if that was a possibility. Anything's possible. But it, um, because I think actually in your statements I read, and I think you can see that people do use that to go around. I saw car tracks on behind some of, I think behind some of the, the fences here.
Well, we park there sometimes.
Okay. But obviously that, there's.
I mean, they will, if our roads block, we allow people to. We don't necessarily encourage people to use our, our auxiliary lot as a, as a thoroughfare.
Still a lot of traffic down there, is there?
There's, I. There's seven homes, and there's, you know, deliveries and, I mean, it's not like it's fine, but I mean, there is people going back and forth.
Not master road.
It's a dead end.
It's a dead end.
So they have to, whoever goes in is coming out.
The existing building that's shown, is that a garage?
No, that's the, that's the larger shed that's, will be removed. The smaller shed is in the existed paved driveway, and the excavation of the paved driveway would also be part of the project.
So I think you addressed it somewhat, the impervious surfaces that you were looking at, you're going to remove it.
Yes.
Tell me about the process of removing it. Do you intend to build the garage? Have it used, then remove the, then remove the pavement and the, and the patio?
I would, I would, um, be very happy to have the, the driveway excavated per, you know, contingent on the approval of this project. You know, I, I wouldn't wait on that, I would, I would have it done.
But what's the material, it's sand or, you know, what kind of, if you took it up, is it just dirt, right?
Right, no, um, right, it would be dirt. There, there are permeable paving filtration systems that I have read up on. If there's crushed stone, there's.
What do you intend to put there after you move up, pull up the pavement?
Probably crushed stone.
What's the point of doing that?
To increase the pervious surface.
But, so now, whenever you want to park your car, you have to go into your garage?
Or use the auxiliary lot that we utilize now to, for guests.
Which is, which would be paving on the dirt.
But you can park on the crushed stone, I mean, it doesn't prevent you from parking on that.
But the intent of it would not be as a parking space. But of course, you know, people park wherever they want, park in the road, you know.
Would you also be removing your patio?
Well, that, that actually would be the area.
That's where the garage would be.
That would be the garage. Those pavers would be.
Yes, those will be removed.
Those pavers are over here?
Yes, they are. Uh, they're, they're on the east side of the existing building that.
So this over here is just all a paved driveway?
There is a driveway, and there's also that shed that you see in picture A.
Okay.
The first picture in that little package.
And where you have the, um, proposed garage, is that where the brick?
The pavers are.
Is that all brick?
It's, it's cement pavers.
Sure, it's a type of brick, bigger.
H.
It looks like brick.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's actually large, it's not really, it's.
It's not bricks, I understand it's not bricks, but it's, it's man-made, you put it together.
Yes, it is, it's cement, and, yeah.
Are those being removed as well?
Yes, those are the area where the proposed garage would be.
Is the fence going to stay up?
The fence would not stay up in that area, the fence would meet the west side of the shed extension.
So going back to what we, the motion I made, is, is my motion, that denied it, and it was basically, uh, safety, and you weren't really paying attention to the Conservation Commission kind of thing. It's kind of, and that's why you came back to us and said, now, we've, you've, we've looked at what they've said and, and what the public has said regarding safety, and I know the, um, you know, you're intending to remove the perv, uh, impervious surfaces,
Yes.
which is really not a, in front of us to make a condition we could, I guess, but, and then the, uh, you're also doing rain barrels and, or rain gardens.
You know, after the gutter systems in place,
Right.
whatever rain gardens and, you know, would be necessary, or catch basins, or however, the, the best way to filtrate that.
Okay. And you think that, going back to the safety aspect, you think that a garage setback four feet allows someone that's exiting the garage in a car sufficient space to pull out, look both ways before pulling into the road a lot, right?
Yes, yes. And I, I feel it creates a safer situation that we currently have where our house blocks any oncoming traffic down that road.
And so whether you reverse in or drive straight out, or you, you think you'd be able to, it's a safer situation for the, exiting.
I do feel that.
Okay.
Did you read the letter that we got?
I have not, yeah.
Uh, one of their butters, John Turcot?
He, he's a neighbor.
Isn't that a butter?
No, he's a neighbor.
Okay, I stand corrected. But anyway, he made a very positive comment in that, he says, "The garage and the location that you're proposing will improve this traffic safety conditions on the road. The view of their driveway where it is currently located is completely blocked by their house as one travels to the paved portion of Moose Club Park Road because the road bends around the corner of their house in front of the driveway. This has led to a number of close calls which happen when people are pulling out of the driveway at the same time that others are driving to the paved portion of Moose Club Park Road. The proposed location of the garage is on a straight portion of the road and entrance of the garage will be visible from both directions."
Okay.
He had, um, some positive things to say, very nice of him.
You need, you need a backup beeper, beep beep, when you back up. My, my question is, um, did you go to DES? Have you gone to DES?
I have made contact with them. Um, I have not submitted a formal package with them. I'm in the process of doing that, exactly which permit package. Now that the driveway is included, it actually is a different process than the original proposed plan. Because the total surface area with, including with the excavation of the driveway is now over fifteen hundred feet. Even though it's going to be restored to a more natural state, they have to include it in that, so I can't use the, uh, applica-, uh, application by notification.
Is, Vivian, what you're referencing, is this the elevation certificate, certificate that's in part of the package now? Is there some separate activity?
I just, I, I read the minutes of the Conservation Committee of April twenty-fifth and they suggested, they did mention DES several times.
Yeah.
Because DES will have to provide a shoreland permit for this.
Yeah.
So that's, that's what the application would be for.
Yeah, they haven't contacted them at all and a lot of times DES will make recommendations that the Conservation Commission will agree with and it kind of makes things easier.
So I mean, it's still, it's not out of order in the fact that if we give them, uh,
No.
variances, they still gotta go to DES to get approval.
That's right.
Correct.
What is the elevation certificate that's in the package that you have?
Um, that is something we had performed after FEMA recreated their flood maps.
Okay, so it's something that, activity that's already happened?
Yes.
Okay, because I just noticed that it just expired, so.
No, act, that's the form, I looked that up because I, it kind of concerned me. I said, what is that? That's, that's their actual form.
Oh, that makes sense.
I was like, what?
There you go. Any other questions?
Would, would you be willing to give up the other drive, driveway, drive area as a parking area?
I'm sorry, I don't understand which question.
Well, what-
Which area you're talking about?
I'm talking about your existing paved area.
Yes, that's our intent, to not have that as a primary parking spot.
We're not saying that it would never be used for parking.
You know, somebody comes over and parks there, that's a visitor, I'm not gonna, you know, shoo them off. But it's, it's not where we're going to park every day. If we get a delivery or something, I, it would still be usable.
Well, I think one of the-
I don't, I guess I don't understand your question.
This is where they're putting the gravel, right?
Yes, the crushed stone.
You're ripping up the driveway and putting the gravel, yeah.
So basically, everything but our driveway around there is dirt.
I, I understand that, but it-
So really, it's not really changing any of the surfaces around, it's just making more dirt and-
One of the reasons that you had, you had stated about moving it to the side of the building was for safety.
Yes.
Because the existing place where you park is very unsafe.
It is.
So my question to you again is, would you be willing to give up that parking area because of safety issues?
Yes. But I guess, just my point was, you can't help if somebody comes over and they block the road, you, you know.
It's very limited for parking down there, so I think that to restrict and never allow to be parked in that area would be creating a more, a more uns safer situation because you said we can't park here.
So we've, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna try, try straighten this out in that in the few months back, we had a lot of meetings that we were regarding driveways. Does this property, is this driveway where the existing paved drive, is it their one driveway for their property? And that is, if you create a second driveway, you can, again, you can only have one curb, curb cut?
Right.
I mean, is that what's happening here? I mean, we haven't really talked about that this is a driveway. It can only be so wide, it can only be so many of them. Is that coming to play here?
That would come into play, um, if they're calling it a non-driveway. Um, you know, there are a lot of people in town who, um, still are allowed, like a tip-down or something like that for a delivery vehicle to kind of pull in and do a delivery. Say for if they have a cord of wood or something that they need dropped in their, in, on their lot. Um, that delivery vehicle can get, get in on a different location than their, their driveway because it, it accesses the back of their property or how, whatever it may be. I know the town does allow those tip-downs and doesn't count them as driveways.
So what would this be counted as if the pervious, if the impervious surface stayed and they used it to park vehicles? Would it be considered a driveway?
It would be considered a driveway. They do need to remove it if they wanna do it this way.
Is the gravel considered, is, as gravel, is it considered a driveway?
Um, not necessarily. It's considered a, a ground cover. Um, depends on, I guess-
Intent?
Well, if we compacted it, then it would be quite obvious.
And it's a driveway.
So it goes right back to what, what Kathy's asking is-
I, we have every intent to not park there.
It's not gonna be on the map considered as a driveway anymore.
And I would, I would have to say that-
I think we can rely on their statements here to-
And I would have to remind you that, uh, we'll recollect that when we were talking about the property across the street. That you actually said, one of you, that that's where you park your car sometimes or you park vehicles there sometimes. So when you talk about overflow parking, overflow parking, you have plenty of space across the street for- Overflow parking, other than this particular impervious surface that is next to your house.
You're absolutely correct.
I guess I-
I know, I know.
It, to me, it makes more sense to leave the pavement there and have it in case you need to park, so that you're parked on something where your oils can't penetrate into the ground, you're right next to the river. I just think that's more important than parking across the street on the dirt, because you have to have a driveway. There is no driveway if you take that way.
They're gonna have one.
Out, a garage.
Have one out of the garage.
It's gonna be a four-foot long.
Park inside the garage.
It's not long enough for a driveway. But they'll be parking primarily in the garage. I understand that, but everyone has a driveway, even if you have a garage. It doesn't make sense to me to say you can only park in your garage because that, that will never be policed by anyone. And for the environmental reasons, I think it makes a lot more sense to let them keep the pavement and if they would like to park there or park in their garage, park in either place, instead of forcing them to cro, park across the street on a dirt where their oils can leak into the ground and-
So right now, they don't have that extra parking. I mean, so if you put two cars in this and two cars in the garage, I don't know how big it's gonna be. Are you losing parking spots by doing this move?
Um, not, no, no, not really, because we basically put two cars in that driveway. You know, every once in a while we'll squeeze a third, but that's a very rare occasion.
And two cars in the garage.
Well, we don't have a garage.
No, I mean, how many cars will go in the garage?
Oh, two cars will only be able to fit in the garage, yes.
I would be more concerned about the, the, the garage and the shed going in, that you might wanna look at the drainage and, and how that's going to have an impact on that land. Because now you're adding more structures on the site and where the runoff is going to go, so that you don't cause any-
And that's the reason why the, the whole, the whole reason why the Conservation Commission brought up the fact that they'd like that other driveway pulled up.
But that's ridiculous, in my opinion.
It decreases the impervious and where the-
They're trading, they're trading impervious surfaces.
And I get it, but it's not, in real life reality, if whoever lives there, if you're not always, I have a garage, I don't always park in my garage. Sometimes it's a pain in the neck. If, if, especially if you're going back out or something, you don't always pull into your garage. It, it, that's the facts of life. You're gonna park somewhere and if the only place that you've left them to park is on the gravel which the oils can go through or across the street on the grass which the oils can go through, that's a lot worse for the environment. I think you, you're barking up the wrong tree here. I think you need to look at how the, how this new structure will affect the drainage in the area. And maybe Macon can take a look at that. I'm sure it's not a big deal. It's not that big of a structure. But I don't agree with the Conservation Commission on this one at all, and usually I do, but on this one I don't.
So your suggestion is to leave the asphalt there?
Yeah, leave it there. It's not that big.
Right.
It fits those two cars. There, if you look in the photo, those two cars are right next to each other. It's not like there's an expansion.
I don't think that the Conservation put that in for us to make the recommendation on, so it would be behoove me to know that Conservation may have made that recommendation, but I don't think they've made it a requisite for us to-
Well, they're only an advisory committee anyway, so they can-
And I agree with Joanne. I do agree with that part of it.
And I, I'm trying to say, the applicants, applicants coming before us have stated that they're going to- Stated they're going to remove it. Their desire is to remove it. They don't need it there. I, I understand our-
I think that's because they were told to remove it.
We were recommended to remove it. We added it.
I know.
We have no issue in removing it.
Look at those cars. There's not a lot of space there.
No.
I just think it's stupid. And, and then you run the risk of vandalism because now your cars are parked on a separate lot across the street. It's probably, I'm assuming it's very dark down there at night. There's lots of car vandalisms going on. I just think it's ridiculous.
They're intending to park in the garage.
Yes, but again, if, if you come home from work and you have to go back out again, chances are you may not park in the garage.
But we, it, I think we- We do have the lot across the street. We do, and, and it's not, it's dirt. It's the same as the road, which cars could leak up and down that road if they want to. There's nothing preventing any leaky car from traveling our roads.
What, what, what may happen is when they meet with DES, they may say, I don't know why you're taking up the asphalt. They may even say, why are you doing it?
I don't think we should make it a condition. If they wanna take it up, they can take it up.
Yeah.
But I don't think it should be a condition.
Nobody's made a motion yet on it, so.
One of the things that the Conservation Commission said when I transcribed their minutes, let me remember, see if I can remember correctly, is that, um-
You have them, you have them with you.
I have it right here.
You have a memo from the Conservation Commission.
And Vivian's got the-
Is that, well, Carlos made a comment about when they go to DES.
Right.
Um, and basically, let's see, let me find it. If you have something that doesn't meet the setback, you can expand as long as it doesn't bring it closer to the water. You don't meet the setback and the structure is brought closer to the water, so it'll probably be problematic. And he was talking about at DES.
Right.
But this whole application could be problematic anyhow.
Right, yeah. Because they're gonna be closer to the water.
Right.
And also, they had brought up the fact that, um, the difference in what we consider impervious surface versus what the state considers impervious surface. I'm wondering if that could be problematic as well at DES because it is a greater percentage as they see it.
Right.
Um, and they are more stringent.
And the applicants brought that up where it's, uh, shoreland protection shows forty-four point eleven percent.
Currently, our existing impervious-
Can I ask you something? Would it be in the zoning board's best interest to wait to hear what DES's comments are on this particular property? Before we go ahead and approve the plan? Well, they, the, the recommendation was to approve it with the rain gardens, the removal of asphalt and DES approval.
I would have a concern on what I'm actually submitting to the state if I don't have an approved package here.
Our, my thought is that it's not up to us to decide. It's up to us to decide the use and if we allow this or not.
Right.
And it's not up to us to wait and let, wait until DES makes their recommendations or their decisions and grants their permits. They can always deny the application regardless of us granting any variances.
Yeah, I mean, we have some responsibility on the well and surface water conservation district and, and trying to protect the water ourselves. So, um, we share the responsibility, I'll put it that way. Any other questions from the applicants? Applicants? Okay, thank you. I will call anybody else? No, nobody out there. Anybody out there?
No.
Vacuum.
Yes, open to the public, any comments? All right. So, looks to be no other information from else? Are we seeking, do we need to seek information from anyone else before we close the public hearing?
I don't think so.
Okay. Kathy, do you think we need to seek information from anyone before we close the public hearing? Anything that you need?
I don't, I, I really don't think so. I just think there's a lot of different issues that were brought up this time that we hadn't discussed before, so.
Okay, Vivian, anything?
I'm all set.
Okay, with that, we're gonna close the public hearing. Any motions?
Make a motion to approve with the, uh, condition that are recommended by the Conservation of the rain gardens and the DES approval.
Second.
Okay, did, you mentioned before the impervious surface. Anything about the impervious surface?
No, I didn't put in the removal of asphalt or anything.
Okay, so you did that intentionally, right?
Yeah.
So, so we have a first and a second regarding approve the variances. There's four, right, four variances. Um, with the conditions to put in the rain gardens or barrels or whatever, right? In accordance with the Conservation Commission discussion? And approval from DES to make this happen, which would have to happen anyhow.
Right, that's right. Not just to put it in there.
You're gonna make a note of that. And a second by Joanne. Any discussion?
Can I just ask a question? Does the fact that they stated it in their application still require them to do the driveway things? I mean, are you guys trying to state to them that they don't have to do it? Or are you just trying to avoid discussing it or, I mean, I just, I just don't wanna get to the point where, you know, somebody will come and look at this and say, well, they're required to do it because they said they would do it in this application. So-
But we're not making it-
If you're trying to not make them do that, I think it might be behoof you to state that they're not required to do this.
If they wanna do it, they can, but it's not-
The requirement of, of, of their, what they stated in their applicant as far as removing the asphalt, it's not a requirement of the zoning board, motion.
So you have three conditions. So your approval with three conditions. One, they need to put in the rain gutter, or the rain barrels or the rain garden. Um, the DES approval and the fact that even though the application says it, the zoning board is not requiring to move the, remove the impervious surface, which is the driveway.
The DES may still require it, so I would, I would make sure that you know that.
Yeah, unless the DES requires it. And the reason that I'm not going to disagree with that is because I feel that DES has the ability to jurisdiction over the maintaining or removal of the asphalt.
Yeah.
So I would defer to the state jurisdiction on the particular issue of the asphalt.
Just the zoning board's not gonna require it.
Right.
Uh, uh, by themselves. We're not gonna by ourselves.
And the reason that I'm not, I'm not saying that I, I would like to see it be required by ourselves is because I feel that I'm, I'm, I don't wanna jurisdiction on it because I think DES is going to jurisdiction.
We have the right to still include that in.
Right.
That is something that the Conservation Commission recommends. Um, I, I personally don't think it should be, um, excluded. I think it should be included in the motion to have the impervious surface removed. Because it increases, it increases the amount of impervious surface beyond what they've claimed in the application. And for me, there's a greater concern of the runoff and things that's gonna get into the water, so I think it should be there.
The only other question I guess that comes up with that is whether or not the ZBA is, I guess, interpreting that the driveway or the four-foot piece of approach to their garage would become a driveway or whether that's just an approach and not considered a driveway because it's not big enough to even park a car. I'm not, or, and, and so, you know, whether or not they're getting two driveways or one. How, how are you interpreting that?
Right.
Well, they've said that they're going to park, that they're, while it's not in a, a primary parking spot, that they still can be parking there or still intend to park there. And the fact that it's going to be gravel versus, um, grass, um, to me reflects that it's, even though it, maybe it's not technically a driveway- grass, to me, reflects that it's, even though maybe it's not technically a driveway, it still reflects that it's a driveway to me.
But on the tech, but on the map, you remove, the idea is that they would remove the driveway designation from that area? Do you have a?
I lost you.
So, right now, that corner where the asphalt is, is considered the driveway. When they build the garage, technically, that four-foot section is the driveway into the garage. Are we saying they can have two driveways? Or are we not, you know, what are we designating as driveways? Under the motion that you have. They didn't come to us for a variance for two driveways.
Well, I don't understand how a four-foot.
Access or approach.
driveway because you can't fit an SUV there. A parking space is eighteen to twenty feet long in a parking lot.
It's probably not unique, though. I mean, there's probably other properties in condo units.
I would not consider that a driveway, but do we have anything in our ordinance that says driveways must be paved? Do we allow?
No, they can be of different knit pack, crush gravel, asphalt.
But they, can they be dirt?
No.
So the land across the street, unless they were to put something else down on it, could not be considered a driveway. So they're left with no driveway.
But they park there already across the street.
But it doesn't matter. They're left with no driveway. If someone were looking at that house to purchase in the future, there's no driveway. And I don't think we should leave it that way. I think we should leave the driveway as it is. And if the DES says that they have to remove it, then, you know, that's, that's out of our hands.
Put a picnic table there, please.
Will DPW consider it a driveway or this access into the garage? What will DPW, what will DPW consider it?
Well, they may, they may have to rely on what the ZBA sort of talks to at this point.
It's not long enough for a driveway. They couldn't possibly call it a driveway.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to be so argumentative.
But they have to have some sort of a curb cut off of the road, some sort of something off of the road to get to the garage. So what is that called?
It's just the pad into the garage.
But drivers are not defined by length. They're defined by width and curb cuts.
If they didn't have the garage, that would be a driveway.
If there was no garage, sure, because there'd be enough room.
So you count the garage as part of the driveway?
I don't think so.
No, you can't. I just tried it.
Well, again, they have.
I think we're getting into two issues. I think we're getting into the possibility of issuing a variance that says that a single-family home can have two driveways. And I think there's, we're missing, I understand, well, I think, to be perfectly honest with you, I think we, again, the clarity is not clear.
Is there a definition in here?
That's what I'm looking for. That's what I'm looking for. Definition of driveway, if there is one. I doubt it.
Yes, a space located on a lot built or used for vehicular access by automobiles or trucks to a garage, parking space or service area. Doesn't say to be parked on. It's on page V of the zoning ordinance.
Five.
Page V.
Five.
It's not five. Five is later.
No, that's Roman numeral five.
Roman numeral five.
It's on page B.
Did you take, did you take Latin? No?
It's five, right?
It's five.
Yes, it is.
Roman numeral five.
So it doesn't describe length. It's only purpose.
So in that case.
It's a driveway.
It is a driveway into the garage.
So you should rip up that driveway.
So.
Stupid.
Stupid ordinance.
Well, then you got your.
It doesn't mean you can't, it doesn't mean.
Well, it doesn't mean you cannot go and park there.
You need a variance to have a second driveway.
It doesn't say how long, because typically, if you have a space in front of your garage, there's enough room to at least put one car.
How wide is the driveway? Could they pull in, I mean, if they didn't want to pull into their garage and it's one car that's planning to go back out, could they just pull off the road and kind of park?
In front of it?
In front of the garage.
It's four feet. It's only four feet. Yeah, they would be sticking out into the road.
Yeah.
Now, that doesn't necessarily say they can't park there anyway, because what about on-street parking? You're allowed to park on a street anywhere.
On that street? It's like this wide.
Yeah.
It's, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that it's a smart idea, but they would still, they wouldn't be restricted from parking on that street.
I know, but let's be practical here.
No, come on.
And besides, is anyone from this town really going to go over there and say?
I don't think that's, Joanne, I don't think that's the issue. I really don't. You know, we had this issue with another application that was here within the town, and we had, you know, there was great discussion on, you know, two driveways and parking and so on and so forth.
The court, right?
And we have to be, we have to be specific. We have to be consistent.
We just, we shouldn't just allow people to drive on, park on their yards within the setbacks. I mean, that's what it comes down to, right?
And I don't think you can call something a driveway that doesn't fit a car. Might fit a little plate car, but.
The definition is that it accesses the garage as well, so an entrance.
Then you need to change your ordinances. You know, we, we have this discussion.
There must be other driveway. What's the word?
Description or.
Description in the driveway for that application.
Here's the, the rule in the driveway section, or in the parking section of the ordinance, seven, seven point three point five. Except for areas within defined driveways, off-street, oh, no, I'm sorry. This.
Did that just get changed?
Yeah, it just got changed to only apply to commercial and three-family or more.
What about the, on the driveway?
That's how I was interpreting previously.
So what is the news ordinance say about?
News ordinance is mute on on most residential.
Width of driveway.
Width of driveways and standards for driveways because that ordinance section didn't pass on the voting.
So seven-three-five still exists under the.
There is, there is a little bit separation of driveways in non-residential districts.
And this is a what district?
This is a residential district.
So it says, except for, in seven point three point five setbacks and restrictions, except for areas within defined driveways, defined driveways, off-street parking shall not be located within the required front yard setback.
That, that doesn't apply anymore, though, because of, if you look at seven point three, parking area design shall apply to three or more family dwellings in all other non-residential uses and shall be regulated by.
So that's the limiting for the whole rest of it.
So that whole rest of that section, all of seven point three, point one through seven point three point six applies only to non-residential and three families.
There's no guidance on, so you can park up on the yard.
It used to apply to everyone, and now we had tried to split it up and give one set of, one group a set of rules and the other a group of set of rules. And the residential group got nixed on the voting, and so.
So there's no guidance on residential.
Right.
So they can park up on the yard, line them up.
Line them up.
Another condition.
You put as many as you can fit.
Another condition is to put, this is not a driveway. A big sign.
Don't people have that in there on the garage door? Do not park.
But the zoning ordinance still limits that you can only have one driveway.
It does still limit that you can only have one driveway. That's right. So that would be where, you know, it's questionable whether a, an area of crushed gravel would be determined as a driveway or not.
But if we said, this is not a driveway, they still can park there because it's not against the zoning ordinance. You just can't designate it a driveway anymore.
Are you talking about in front of the garage?
I'm talking about, so, so this is, they could leave the pavement there. We say, nope, the driveway's in front of the garage, right? They still can park in that corner. They can still park where that pavement is, whether there's pavement there or dirt there. They can do all that because it's not against the zoning ordinance.
That's what I'm saying. No one's going to police it.
Well, before, it was a policeable item. Now it's not even a policeable item.
Right.
Well, I think this is all just very.
Temporary? Outside of what we're supposed to be doing today?
I just, I want to make sure the zone, the zoning board is not going to determine something that they shouldn't be. And if you look back at that definition, a space located on a lot built or used for vehicular access by automobiles or trucks to a garage, parking space or service area. You have to make sure that whatever you're allowing them to keep doesn't meet this definition.
Doesn't it need to, even though it doesn't say it, doesn't it need to at least allow for one car to park there to be a driveway? How could you call it a driveway if you can't fit your car there?
Just put the condition, only one driveway.
It doesn't, it doesn't speak to that, though. It says, if it is a space located on a lot used for vehicular access to a garage.
Common sense, it can't be a driveway if you can't fit a car there.
Common sense doesn't, doesn't help us in this situation.
You could fit your bicycle maybe, but.
No.
Or a motorcycle, maybe.
So we have a motion.
Common sense doesn't help us fix the language that's in our zoning ordinance. We have to fix that at the town vote.
I wouldn't say, I would, I would say four feet is enough to be a driveway, whether you can fit a car there or not. It is the connecting point between the road and the garage, and that is what the definition in the ordinance says is a driveway. No matter what the size is, and we don't have sizes, so until we define or, or change the, the definition, our zoning ordinance of what a driveway is, and maybe make it to be bigger or larger that fits a car or two cars.
I like your idea. Just say that they can only have one driveway. Who cares which one it is?
The condition is, there's only one driveway allowed on this property.
Let that come up when they need their driveway permit.
What bothers me about, well, that's what really.
There might be rules that they follow when they issue a permit.
What bothers me about this is that I, I was under the impression throughout both of these applications that the car, this area over here wasn't going to exist anymore that was paved, that it was being presented like it wasn't going to exist anymore anymore, that the cars weren't going to be parking there anymore because they wanted to get them off of there and they wanted to build a garage so they could put their cars underneath and inside the garage. And now we're sitting here and we're stumbling about whether we're going to have both parking areas for the vehicles, and I, all I can say is that my, my understanding of everything we have discussed in, in the last application, this application was, there was only going to be one place for them, for the cars, and it was in the garage. And now we're talking about this, now we're talking about, no, we're going to have the garage and we're going to have this existing paved drive. And then, so I, I'm, I'm getting a little off, off track here.
So I think we have enough information.
Right.
We're going to go repeat what the motion is. The motion is to approve the four variances with currently, as I understand, there's three conditions. One, they implement rain barrels or rain garden as the Conservation Commission described. Two, they need DES approval on their plan because of this. Three, help me out, what was the third one?
There wasn't one.
It was, it was added that they, the removal of the old driveway is optional.
That, that wasn't.
Okay, that was, that was the add. So the fact that we, even though the application said that they would remove it, your motion, your conditions said that they did not have to move it. The zoning board was not going to make them do it. Is that still your motion?
Yes.
So her motion has two conditions, not three.
Yeah, it's three.
It's three.
With a clarification.
Sure.
So you've added the removal of the asphalt?
No.
The fact that they don't have to do it.
Oh, so you've added on that they don't have to remove the asphalt.
Because their application said they're going to do it.
Okay, so you've added that they don't have to remove it. Okay.
Which basically just leaves out the DES to really make.
DES and, and the applicant.
And DPW. Because DPW has to decide whether or not to grant them a permit for a driveway.
And so.
And a fourth condition should be, and that there is only one driveway.
Well, that's part of our regulation.
Yeah.
Doesn't need to be a condition.
That is.
I think the Department of Public Works will, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, no, it's clear.
Yeah.
No, I would love to know what happens.
We're throwing a grenade. We just pulled it in. And so, Joanne, you had seconded it.
I seconded that.
You're still seconding with that understanding? Any discussion?
Why would you, why would you keep an area paved if you weren't going to park in it?
Well, Joanne just stayed.
Sidewalk talk?
This, this, why would, why, now, that's common sense. Why would you leave an area paved if you weren't going to?
What if you have groceries or furniture or to carry in?
Joanne talked about it before. Talked about it, it's what people would reasonably do, and she believed that it would protect it, so.
Put a basketball hoop on it.
So.
With basketball.
Yeah, you could.
Any other discussion before we take a vote?
DES may have them remove it.
Had little kids, they could.
Yeah, it can suit other purposes as a paved surface.
Toys, whatever you call them.
So, I'm, okay, any other last information before we vote on this? Okay, so it's for approval, first and a second. All those in favor of these four variances being approved with the two conditions and one clarification, say aye.
Aye.
So that's an aye. Joanne is an aye. Kathy?
No.
No.
No. So three, two, does not pass. So two to three, it does not pass.
So they don't get their variance?
So we haven't.
Necessarily.
Not necessarily.
I have to make a different motion, you're saying?
So I'll make a motion to approve the four variances with, let's see, I think it's, what was your second condition?
The rain barrels.
Rain barrels, rain gardens.
Yeah, so with the condition of the, with the recommendation of Conservation Commission of the rain barrels and rain garden. And the DES, even though I think that would, that's hand in hand anyhow. But they do are required to remove the impervious pavement in accordance with the application they submitted. That's my. Gail, a second? Any discussion?
All right.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the four variances with the two conditions, say aye.
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 That may.
No.
So aye, 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 no, okay.
Can you find out about that? So we know.
Okay, that's it?
It'll probably be an interpret.
It'll probably be a long, lengthy discussion, just like we've just now had.
You were the longest one.
Yes.
You're honored.
One, two. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
All right.
I concede.
That's all the items on the public hearing. We do, we are not going to be talking about the rules procedure.
Can I ask, we didn't tell them the timeframe, like, we didn't say they had to remove the impervious before they built their garage?
Yeah, we.
It's in accordance with the plan as presented, so we did say that.
So again, next month, we intend to review the rules of procedure, and I think the last time we really looked at it, it's been a couple of years where we really scrubbed it. And I had some question marks on it and stuff, so I think there's some items that could change on it. Probably mostly things that we haven't been really doing, so we might as well take them out if we're not following it. That's what it comes down to. We had correspondents request to be an alternate to the ZBA from Daniel Doucet. And he was part of an application a couple of months back. I'm trying to picture it, Daniel Doucet. Oh, right. Yes, we approved that application.
As long as it met the setback requirements to the paper wrote.
Yeah, Brian explained to me, because I asked the same thing this morning, when we, when I came in about, to get a refresher on who he was and what application. And he had explained that process was a little longer than maybe what, I'm presuming maybe than what Mr. Doucet.
Yeah, his application talked a little bit about that, yeah.
What's the scoop with paper roads, anyway? Are they, do we have a list of paper roads? Are they still?
Did you ever find that list?
There was a list of paper roads that had been extinguished a long time ago, and I'll give you the long and short answer, I guess. Neville Road had been removed from that specifically because of, you know, people had actually been, had concerns about it back then. And so it never was formally extinguished by the selectmen. However, going back and looking at the statutes, the statute language had changed over time, but what it used to read was that if a paper road that had been dedicated to the town but never built in a period of twenty years, and this is up until the sixties sometime, it was automatically extinguished or released. It didn't have to have any kind of formal action by the selectmen. It just was automatically let go because it never was built or accepted by the town. That being said, this plat came in during that time period of when that statute was applicable. That being said, this plat came in during that time period of when that statute was applicable, and so we made the determination that it was automatically extinguished, and that, you know, the town didn't lay claim to that road anymore. Now, that being said, we, we wanted to make sure it was clear that we weren't stating to this property owner that he owned that half of Neville Street, um, because it's not our place to tell him, um, you know, what, what's in his deed, but it's up to him to go and quiet title in order to make sure that no, there's no other persons that may lay claim to that, to that land. So that was our statement to him in the, in the, in the letter we wrote to him, explaining the status of Neville Street and.
Can you send us, can you send us an electronic copy of the list of paper roads?
Yeah. We don't have that many left, do we, of paper roads?
It's.
The one, no, the ones that were paper roads and extinguished, and then the rest that were remaining.
Well, I think that may be a larger project than what you're, because I don't know that there is a formal, good list of all the paper roads in town that are, that are existing. I know there was a list made a long time ago.
In the eighties, there was a.
Of what, what was a paper road, and, you know, I can, I can submit that list to you if you'd like.
Okay.
Do we know, do we know what the paper roads at one time, uh, offered to the two abutters?
They used to do that.
And then they, they gave them more, more property, you know.
So, if we have a list since nineteen eighty of the paper roads that aren't and are, were there any paper roads added since nineteen eighty?
No.
No. So this is an extinguished.
Well, if there was a subdivision approved.
A paper road, yeah, a paper road can exist from a subdivision if it's, if it's approved and signed and recorded and never built, then, I mean, for example, I mean, we've got several subdivisions that have come through the Planning Board, you know, over the past, over the past ten years, that the subdivision has been done and, you know, just sitting there and never built. That's technically considered a paper road until it's built and accepted by the town.
Not only that, I mean, it, if with the existing paper roads we have, we're not supposed to plow or maintain at all. The ones that are in a development and all that, we have no claim on it at all until they're dedicated to the town.
Right.
But I don't think there's that many left. When I left selectmanship, there was very few paper roads left, because we had, but there were some that we couldn't touch, you know? But there is.
But then, like, there's two roads on the side of my house, two different roads.
Yeah.
And one, I think, is called Richard's Road, and I forget the name of the other one, but, like, those were roads from years ago, and they were used, and then when the highway went in, one fourteen, they weren't needed anymore. Schoolhouse Road, I think, is the other one.
I don't think they have them on the, on the paper roads anymore. I know there's some on the mountains, there's some on the mountains.
I think they fall under a different classification than paper.
There's quite a few roads on the mountains that's paper roads.
Classes?
There's a ton of them.
Okay. Not part of the ZBA tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
So back to Daniel Doucette, who wishes to be part of the ZBA as an alternate. Any discussion, and I'm gonna have, uh, Vivian be the voting alternate on this, to accept the application or not. Any discussion? Our motions regarding Daniel Doucette to be the fourth alternate with a period.
Who's the fourth alternate? One, two, who's the third?
I didn't go and get that.
Are we updated on the website of what we are, what we have?
Should we invite him?
Yeah, it is up to date.
He was invited to come tonight, Brian.
He was invited?
I sent him an email today, but I don't know if he got the email.
I can.
Who's the third alternate?
Before we go ahead and appoint, should we invite him?
Yeah, like, I think that, yeah.
We have not met the other alternate.
You don't have to make a decision tonight, you can.
Did you appoint one last week, or not last week?
The same time, Joe.
We got Joe, and who's the third one?
There's Brian King.
Oh, that's right. Have, have you heard from him?
No.
I just feel like you should talk to him. His little note here, he seems a little aggressive, saying that he's gonna come in and introduce common sense, so maybe he's not as, um, aggressive as he's indicating here.
Well, we just won't put him on any of the applications.
My, my thought on that, I was a little, kind of, taken aback by it myself, because it does sound a little bit biting.
Yeah.
And if he had a rough time in, or he had, was disillusioned in what the process would be for his application, he maybe has some grudges or something, but I think, I came in as a, as an abutter to a project, and, um, kinda had an attitude towards the ZBA and what they had approved and things like that. But I kind of learned that it's not as easy and cut and dry as an abutter or an applicant thinks it is. So there's a lot of rules, a lot of laws and things to follow, and if he's sincere, then that's what he's gonna learn as well.
Yeah, that's why I think that at least getting him in to speak with him.
Yeah.
To get a feel for.
I would, I would like, I mean, I, I grant you that we had the application from Brian King, and we, we, we approved it, um, but his was more of a, uh, resume about himself, other than a comment as to.
Common sense.
About this. Uh, well, the expression I would use for this fellow is, he seems to be a whippersnapper. And that would be kind of a, 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 an adjective I might say, but I don't know. And, um, he obviously has some charisma and some drive that he feels that he'd like to come on board and, and help us, and, I, I think, I agree with Joe that I would like to, I, I would like to invite him maybe more than a day's notice to invite him here, I don't know. I know, I know some people don't know whether they should go or they shouldn't go, whether I should be there, I shouldn't be there, but maybe we should extend that, that.
So is it, is this?
I think we have the time to do it. We, we got all the minutes now.
I feel that he, he thinks we need some common sense on the board, and I'll go along with Gail. I mean, everybody has an agenda on why they're on the ZBA, or why they did want to be on the ZBA.
I didn't.
So I think, well, I didn't.
You're good.
I think, I think, but you know what?
Good try.
Let him sit here, let him be part of the board, let him find out that it's not as easy as he thinks it is.
You can make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
To approve.
To approve his, uh, his application with, uh, without, without meeting him.
The, uh, terms available, um, it doesn't, actually doesn't have listed the terms for those two vacancies. So for the alternates that are there, there's two for two thousand ten to two thousand thirteen, there's one for two thousand twelve to two thousand fifteen. What would be the next logical progression? I guess now.
They're all three-year terms, so.
So you would just say.
But one's two thousand ten to thirteen, so there's only a year left.
What, yeah, which ones do you have filled?
So, uh, Vivian is on the two ten to two thirteen, Brian's on the two ten to two thirteen, Joe's on two twelve to two fifteen.
So maybe a two thousand eleven to two thousand fourteen.
Yeah.
There's probably an available one. Okay. So for the.
So that's the motion.
So for the years, two thousand eleven, two thousand fourteen. And, uh, maybe, uh, we don't need to make special race to get three signatures on a form before next meeting? Bring that form next time, and we can sign it and.
Yeah, we won't worry about.
And we still haven't seen him, so.
Right, give it a chance, still.
And, you know, if he doesn't care for the responsibilities of the position, he can always resign.
That's right.
You know, nothing says he has to stay, but, um, do we really want to, you know, it takes all kinds to make a board and have diverse opinions. Do we want to turn away somebody when we have, I know, granted, right now we have three other alternates, but we have been so sparse in the past. Do we want to turn somebody away?
I think, I would always just be a little concerned with what if he doesn't want to leave and, and resign, and, and maybe he's not cut out for it.
We wear them out.
Yeah.
They learn, there's a learning curve.
Yeah.
You know, you're gonna learn that yourself, if you're new, and, um.
I, I, I ran for selectmen, and I had an agenda. All right, but when I got in the selectmanship, it was not just my agenda, it had to be everybody else that was involved.
Eyes wide open, yeah.
Well, we alwa- already really have met him, because he was, he was an applicant.
Yeah. So that's your motion. I'm gonna second Vivian's motion to approve.
I hear what you're saying, right.
Don Doucette for the two thousand eleven, two thousand fourteen term is alternate. So first and second.
First name is Dan.
Dan. Did I say Don?
I thought it was Donald, but it's Dan.
Dan, Dan Doucette. Oh, no, doesn't say Donald.
Well, no, there's a motion, there's a motion to approve by Vivian, a second by me.
His wife's name is Donna.
Donna L. Doucette. It's Donna L., and it's gonna say Daniel Doucette, you're right, okay.
So for Daniel Doucette, there's been a first and a second to the motion to approve as an alternate. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
I, I just would rather meet him first.
Okay, so I think there's three to two.
I didn't meet this gentleman first.
We did.
No, I didn't. I wasn't here.
You weren't here that day.
He was in the audience.
Yeah, so I could say I don't want him.
So the three, the ayes have it.
I haven't met him yet, come on.
Dan Doucette is an alternate. So we'll work the paperwork, bring it in, sign it next month.
Yeah. One, two, oh, one, two, three.
I'm always in the minority.
That's not true. Okay, any other items on the agenda? There were none.
Always begging for volunteers.
I was just supporting the new, I was just, yeah, in support of the new alternate.
The new guy.
What'd be, what'd be great is when we, when we get to the point where we actually have multiple people fighting to get on the board, and then you can really have a discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Right. Campaigning, signs.
Are we done?
For this way.
No, we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Was there anything in the program?
Made by Vivian.
That people don't like the fact that the planning board in the ZBA are elected, and they would prefer to see an appointed boards.
Oh, are we adjourned?
No, not yet, so.
We haven't voted. We've got the first and the second.
So, any other, any board business?
Yeah, that's board business.
Right, that's, that's why I didn't call for a vote yet, was there any?
What, what were you talking about?
There's talk out there that people are unhappy with having elected, uh, planning and zoning board, and that they would prefer.
Appointed?
Appointed boards. When the zoning board was appointed, and then it became an elected board.
It did. Right.
There were some that were not happy with that. That's why Tony Martz left.
Yeah.
Because he wasn't going to run for a position, and I can kinda see his point, because there's such a learning curve to it. But on the other hand, I also saw the point of the people who wanted, who wanted it to be an elected position, so it's what the people wanted at the time.
The, the one thing that I question about this board is that being an elected board, why don't we have a member of the Board of Selectmen as a selectman's rep? Because mo- I think all of your, and that, and the reason I feel that we don't have one is because we were an appointed board, and when we became an elected board, I think at that time, consideration should have been given for a Board of Selectmen rep, like on the planning. When we were an appointed board.
I think it's because this is kind of a judicial-type scenario of, and, and the selectmen are much more in a political, um, arena than what the judicial.
I don't think the statute allows, no.
Yeah, it doesn't speak to that at all.
They do for planning.
When this was an appointed board, we had a planning board member.
Yeah, we did, for a short time.
For, and then when it became an elected board, that went away.
Yeah, and that was with the advice of the attorney. He said you couldn't continue with that.
Any other board business?
It's always been one of those dangling questions out there. Should we or shouldn't we?
We should for now. We should adjourn.
I'll take the vote.
Uh, there is a motion to, and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I've seen. Good night.